All right. Good evening and welcome to the Town of Millis Finance Committee meeting. This is Wednesday, November 4th. I'm Jody Garza on the chair. And this will be pre-town meeting tonight. So we're going to do that first and then we have some council business that we need to attend to in terms of approving bills and approving the minutes from our last meeting. So I am going to call the pre-town meeting to order. So we will open with that. Town meeting will be the Saturday at noon at the high school, I believe. You can find details in the Finance Committee report that was mailed out to everyone's home. And it will be outdoors, so dress accordingly and plan accordingly.
Nice day.
Finally, I know, I'll take it. And from what I read that our town moderator had posted on the town website, it looks like there will be chairs already set up. So I don't think we need to worry about bringing our own seating, which is the case in some other towns. So I encourage everyone to go on the website and read what the town moderator posted with some information that everyone should know for town meeting. So why don't we? Actually, I see that Donna Kabibbo is here with us. Donna, is there anything else that you want folks to know about town meeting that I haven't mentioned?
It would be really great if they went out and read what I put out there, but basically we are going to be practicing physical distancing the same way we did at the Springtown meeting. People shouldn't move their chairs once they're seated. We would highly encourage people to wear masks, but it is not absolutely mandatory. You will be allowed to enter town meeting without a mask on. But we do highly encourage people to wear them. We will be sanitizing the microphone as we use it. And one of the biggest changes I think that people need to be aware of is we are doing it in the middle high school parking lot and the only entrance into the meeting will be from that main parking lot. The parking lot behind the building, you will not be able to access the town meeting without walking all the way back around. So we would encourage people not to park in that back parking lot. So.
Okay, so they would come, everyone will come in through the main entrance?
Right, so basically not into the building, but the parking lot that's closest to the school's main entrance and the parking lot over at the tennis courts.
Okay.
Two places that more likely we will have set up spots for not only handicapped, but people that are a little mobility challenged as well. So if you have a mobility issue, but you're not necessarily have a placard, please do feel free to speak to the police officer that it will be on the detail and they will be able to direct you to a spot or perhaps a little closer to where town meeting is being held. So you don't have to walk so far.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right. So we are going to go through the warrant articles as they have been printed up. So if there's any folks here who have any questions or anyone on our council that has any questions as we prepare for town meeting on Saturday, feel free to speak up. If you have your camera off right now and you turn it on, suddenly I may notice and realize that you might want to say something. Otherwise, just going to speak up and we'll, we'll try to do this in an orderly fashion. And I think we're going to have hordes of people clamoring to, you know, speak at the same time. So we'll do the best we can in the platform of Zoom. So our first warrant article, we have nine and the first is unpaid bills. And I think Craig, do you want to go to that one?
I'm muted.
You're not.
Unpaid, unpaid bills are standard article number one at every town meeting. These are bills that were incurred in prior incurred last year, last fiscal year that we did not pay during last fiscal year because they're either submitted late, well typically because they're submitted after the close of the fiscal year. As you know, last close of this fiscal year is a little bit tied up with COVID, so we have a little bit more than in previous years, but there's a total of $17,246.48 of bills that were incurred in FY20 that we have to pay this year in FY21. They're spread across many different departments, all detailed in the town warrant. And it will be read at town meeting line by line, I believe. But it's all detailed in the town warrant, a total of $17,246.48.
Are there any questions on Article One? All right. And Article Two is an adjustment to the operating budget. The budget that was passed at the Springtown meeting had a cut to several departments anticipating that receipts would come in lower both through our tax receipts here in town and from the state. And this article will reinstate all those staff cuts as well as add some more to the schools who have incurred a lot of expenses in dealing with COVID and remote learning. And also putting more funds into the recreation budget because of, you know, they don't have a lot of fees coming in to support their staff right now. And other items that you can read there in the warrant. Are there any questions on Article Two? All right, I hearing none. Why don't we go to Article Three? Peter?
So Article Three are capital items that the Capital Planning Committee considered and scrutinized, prioritized them and looked at those that were needed most to sustain operations for safety issues. Also for integration with other plans that the town may have. And high prioritized high based on various statutory requirements. For instance, the infiltration and inflow study. So there are six projects that are expenditures, that are not all projects, but expenditures that are recommended for funding. Turnout, three of them are for the fire department, turnout gear, SCBA bottles and fire hose. Two of them are vehicles, so there's a pickup truck for water and sewer department with a plow. And that would be funded, let me back up a second, the fire items would be funded through transfer free cash, the water and sewer items and anything that's connected to enterprise fund would come through enterprise funding for the most part. But the dump truck would be water sewer stand, storm, excuse me, storm drain. And then a quarter of it would also come from the general fund for the dump truck that's recommended. That replaces a 23-year-old dump truck and it will also be used for, for plowing. And then I spoke earlier about the sewer infiltration and inflow study. That's a requirement of the state. So the total recommended expenditure for the various funding sources is $328,714. And Finance Committee recommends approval.
Any questions on Article Three? All right, Article Four, Jim, I believe that's you.
All right, this one's for the first year of a three-year lease for a police cruiser, $18,000 and that was coming from free cash.
Any questions on that? All right, we have Article Five, which is Doug.
I was unmuted, okay. Article Five, this is to appropriate an additional $600,000 for the construction of the new DPW facility. The splits are 200 from water, 200 from sewer, 100 from stormwater and 100,000 authorized borrowing. This money is needed in order to finalize and sign the contract to move forward with the construction. And the additional costs are largely due to increase in materials and labor costs as a result of the COVID-19 environment, as well as a little bit more than half of that is contingency, contingencies related to both construction and also for any remediation that may be needed. It's not expected that, that contingencies will be, will use up that amount of money. So probably we're optimistic that half of the, half of the $600,000 won't actually be needed ultimately, which will then turn back. And it's probably worth noting, perhaps, but perhaps not, that with the, these are unrelated items, but with the Clyde Brown School coming under budget by three and a half million dollars, the interest savings from that will more than cover this extra money by a long shot. And I know those aren't exactly related, but it is one way of looking at this broadly.
Any questions on that? All right, Doug, why don't you go into Article? Wait, yeah, Six, right?
All right, so Article Six. This article funds temporary funds, the temporary space for DPW workers. This is, this covers the first year of a two-year lease. This would be necessary in the event that, and get this right. If Article Five does not pass, it will be necessary to have these temporary facilities for the staff of the DPW. And that amount is a total of $275,000. Six, split a third, a third and a third, water, sewer and stormwater.
I believe it's split four ways.
Water, sewer.
Stormwater, general.
Stormwater. Oh, you're right, I missed, I missed, yep, yep, sorry, I missed the first part, the taxation piece, yeah. So, all right. The funding of the 275,000 would be split four ways equally between taxation, water enterprise, sewer enterprise and stormwater enterprise.
And this would be the payment on the first year?
First year.
Of two years.
Correct.
Any questions on this article?
Just for probably preparedness, if Article Five is voted in first, is there alternate, alternative language? Like an if then, you know, if it's voted in, is Article Six just become recommend dismissal?
I believe that's the motion that I made when we did it. It was, it was a Frankenstein of a motion, I have to apologize for that, but there was a contingent, it was a contingent motion.
Yes, it's just not there now and you need to, you know, need to be ready for that.
Doug can make an audible at that moment.
Well, is it, isn't it going to be written in the actual motion itself? When the final, or is it, is this the final motion right here?
So.
I think there, I don't have the motion book in front of me, there should be two parts or typically this parts to it, there's the motion and the affirmative. Should article, the prior article.
I'm looking at the motions.
Yeah, this is, this is, this doesn't say anything about contingency or anything like that, but I know that when we voted, we, that's, that's the way we voted it.
I think the motion that you would make at town meeting floor would be if Article Five passes, so you get to Article Six, you would just say, I move dismissal of Article Six.
Yeah, that's, that's what I figured I'd do. If I have five passes, then we just say Article Six, we recommend dismissal because it's not needed.
Yeah, if it doesn't, then you have to read the motion as written, yeah.
My question would be then, should I make any mention of Article Six in the discussion of Article Five?
I would say so.
Maybe during the discussion?
Well, effectively what this says is that, that if we don't pass five, we're going to spend the $600,000 anyway.
Yes. Yeah.
It's effectively what it says.
To no, to no effective end and guaranteed to spend the $600,000.
I did have one other question and I don't know if Craig, maybe you know the answer to this. So if five doesn't pass, we still, we have that money that's been appropriated already, so it's, 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 the appropriation has been there, is there so that the funds are technically available.
Right, it's on the contract.
But you can't sign the contract. And what happens after two years? So we put them in temporary for two years, are we assuming that we'll still, at some, some way, somehow, we'll be able to do something over those two years?
You'd have a few choices and I don't know what the decision would be at that point, I can't even begin to guess, but the, but the funds are available that have been appropriated. We would have to either use them at some point or turn them back to, or rescind the authority.
Or try to get more money, you get.
Or try to get more money, so really that's your, that's your options. And I think it's a two-year contract on those trailers, that's why it's a two-year window. So I think plan would be over that two-year window to try to secure new funding either through an additional town meeting vote or through grants or other sources. And I don't think we'd be able to come from cost trimmings because it really was cut significantly to get it to this level. You'd fall below the level of functionality at that point.
Right, and, and the point here is that they're out of that building.
They have to be out of that building for health reasons, really, sort of comes down.
And do you know, do you know with certainty if there are looming fines if they're not out of the building?
I don't know for certainty that there are looming fines. I know that there's been talk in the, with the DPW staff that it's been basically after the last town meeting, it was a commitment that was made. I don't know how the DPW union would respond to that if that's taken away, because I know there were grievances filed about. I believe there were grievances filed about the building, at least talk of grievances being filed about the.
And just shoot Jim an email for clarification.
Yeah, but I think Jim can answer all of those questions about fines and other ramifications if we don't do anything.
And insurance issues and workplace safety issues.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Donna.
Very quick question on Article Six. So where are the people being housed right now? You know, are they still working in that building and that's why we have potential grievances and such, and that's the issue?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear, I thought that was the case, but I was getting a little bit muddled there, thank you.
Yeah, and they were fine with the fact we're making headway to resolve it, so that that's why, you know, that's why things haven't progressed beyond just, you know, they're, we're at the point where they thought there was going to be a solution. And now we're $100,000 short.
That's what I understood, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't making assumptions that weren't true, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on this article or the related Article Number Five? All right. Thanks Doug, we'll go on to Article Seven, which is the talk of the town, Kathy?
It's, yeah. Let me see, I'm unmuted, okay. Madam Chair, in the town's continuing effort to remove hazardous and unsafe trees from town property, I move that the town vote to appropriate and raise by taxation the sum of $40,000 for said tree trimming and if appropriate, complete removal of the tree. All the trees, all materials shall be removed from the site. Thank you.
Thanks, so this is, I just want to be clear, I think this is different than what was discussed at the Select Board meeting on Monday, which is yes, for tree trimming and removal, but that it would be a reserve fund transfer, as I understand it. This is to take $40,000 out of taxation, an additional 40,000 for more tree removal, so this is a, an additional 40,000. Because I think we can all agree, we have a lot of trees that are suspect in town and we'd rather not have them come crashing down on us or.
Not to be argumentative, but I don't agree.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do you think I should obtain from the tree warden, the streets and areas in the town that will be taken care of as a result of these funds, so the people know and that it's not the Oak Grove Farm, farmhouse situation? Or is that too much information?
Um, I think there's a potential for questions on this article, so.
The more you give them, the less they have to ask.
Exactly, I think if, if you're able to get that information, that would be helpful.
Streets, it's, believe me, $40,000 doesn't get you much of a vehicle or much of tree trimming, so. Yeah, okay, with your leave, I'll do that then and put that in my motion.
So that would be in your discussion, so. Yeah, when it comes to town meeting, you will be recognized and you'll give the motion as it's written here and then the moderator will ask for discussion and then you can explain more of what's in this article.
So what I said in the beginning is okay, or should I put down like all materials shall be removed from the site in the discussion?
So when you make your, right, when you make the motion, you'll stick to what's written here. And then in your discussion, that's when you can elaborate the removal and, and such like that, yep.
Okay, thanks a lot.
You, you go number seven and you'll kind of get a sense for the rhythm of things at that point as well, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Pete?
Just a quick question for clarification for Kathy to know, or at least to ask and find out is when you, when I hear you say all materials will be removed, unless you know that's the case for, the reason I, unless you know that's the case, I wouldn't say it because the last time we, the town removed trees, all materials will not removed from the site. In other words, you can go down Helmut Farb and Dyer in Baltimore where they did a lot of the work and there are massive stumps growing, you know, left out of the ground and wood chips and, you know, things of that sort. Some of us, when we hear tree removal and everything will be removed, we think the stump, which is a significant cost to tree removal. And usually it's not done. And so unless you are certain that they are coming back to remove stomps, and I don't think they are for $40,000, I wouldn't say that.
I'll check on that.
Brutus will know for sure.
Yep.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes, Donna.
So I'm looking at the article as it's written in the, in the warrant and it, so it reads to me, sum of $40,000 for tree trimming and removal or take any other action related there too. So what Kathy read sounded different from what I'm seeing in front of me.
Yes, that, I was making that clarification because we have the motions that are written out for us and those have been vetted through town council. And so when we make our motions, we try to stick to the script of what's written. And then when it comes to the discussion, the time for discussion, that's when we can elaborate more, but yeah, as Pete just demonstrated, sometimes we can get a little, a little ahead of ourselves or a little sideways in the motion if we add language to it. So when, when we give our motion, it will be as written in the book that the, the town has given to us to read. I'm sure Mike has worked tirelessly through that and Deirdre, make sure we, we have copies of that, so we don't make mistakes. All right. Any other questions on Article Seven? All right, thank you Kathy. Article Eight is Katie.
So Article Eight would be a general bylaw change to move the date of the spring annual town meeting. So currently the spring annual town meeting falls after the annual town election. So this would move, this would move the annual town meeting to the first Monday of May and the annual town election to the second Monday of May. So by doing this, the change would allow the select board members who are actually involved in the operational budget for the next fiscal year and the warrant article recommendations to participate in the town meeting before the election.
Thank you. Any questions on that? All right, thank you Katie.
Welcome.
And then we have Article Nine, our final one, which Sean has information for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Article Nine is zoning bylaw amendment to the Millis Center Economic Opportunity Overlay District. And this amendment would extend the overlay district to include 25 additional commercial parcels in the town. And the Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Great, any questions on Article Nine? All right. Any general questions about the motions? So, or the reading thereof, it looks like for Article Nine, what we have for a motion is by amending the various sections as written in the warrant, which would mean that Sean doesn't have to read those 25 parcels out loud. So I just want to double check with our town moderator that she is comfortable with us proceeding in that manner.
I am, and in fact, included in the package that people will be getting at town meeting is some background information on this, as well as a picture of the overlay map. So people will have, physically have that with them, we put on each chair, so.
That's great. The less reading allowed that we have to do, the better, because it can be a little tough to read a, a full page of small print.
And just on that note of, if you don't mind, I just wanted, if, if, I don't know if it's appropriate now or you want to do it later, just going to talk about the setup for you, your committee at the meeting.
Sure, yeah, I think this is the appropriate time for that.
So basically, we're going to be set up in front of the overhang, you're the superintendent's office.
Okay.
Okay, so I will be in what looks like, if you were looking at it from the audience, I will be all the way in the back. And then there will be tables set up for the Finance Committee to what would be my left. You will have two people per table, but there will be a microphone at only one table, so you will have to move to use the microphone. But you all will have a seat at a table. And then the supportive selectmen, as well as the other town officials will be on my right. But everybody will be sort of in front of me. And then we will have the chair set up for people to sit out through the parking lot.
Okay.
Okay, so I think you'll be actually a little bit more comfortable than at Springtown meeting because you'll have an actual chair at a table.
Yes, that would be great.
So.
It will certainly, well, actually it might be about the same temperature as, let's bring, because the fans were cold.
It's, at this point, they're talking somewhere around 65 degrees for the meeting, so we are hopeful that we get that weather. And, but yes, people should still come prepared in case it is chillier than that, so.
Other questions for town meeting, the warrant, any questions? All right. Thank you, everyone, and I think with that, that will close out the pre-town meeting section of our meeting. And we are going to move on to the other items in our agenda. Thank you, everyone, thank you Donna for being here with us, that was very helpful. So we have postponed the reserve fund transfer request from Oak Grove Farm Commission. So we may have to meet again later in November to deal with that once the, that committee is able to kind of finalize their information. once the, that committee is able to kind of finalize their information. So the next item on our agenda is to approve bills payable, one to the community newspaper for advertising the pre-town meeting. That is in the amount of, I want to make sure I have the right one, of, is that the $57.40?
Yes, 57.40.
Can I have a motion?
A move that we approve the community newspaper bill for advertising the amount of $57.40.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the payment of $57.40 to community newspaper company for advertising, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then our next bill is to our town publishing for printing in the amount of $2,987.88.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Old Town Publishing for the printing of warrant and town meeting materials for the amount of 2,900. And, sorry, can't read that, didn't write it down, $87.88.
Second.
And moved and seconded to approve payment of $2,987.88 for printing to our town publishing. Further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining, all right, motion carries. The next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of our meeting of October 21st.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes as written for the Finance Committee meeting held on 21 October. I also second.
We got a second there, I think that was Kathy. All right, any discussion on the minutes? Just want to thank Deirdre as always for preparing these for us.
Yes, indeed.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining?
All right, one, one abstention.
Okay.
I, I see Doug's thumb, or not Doug, Jim Borbren's thumb, but he took it down. I don't even know if he's really there, because it's just a picture.
I'm here.
I see him almost every day, so I know he's around. All right, thank you, everyone. Are there any other items for, that we need to discuss concerning town meeting on Saturday? So the meeting is at noon and I'm assuming it would make sense for us to meet up at 11:30. Do we have a specific area?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr.
Yes, the Finance Committee will have an area in the front, again, there's four tables near the front, so you can either, whatever's more comfortable, you can try to sit socially distanced around those tables, you can stand. But it will be, there'll be an area towards the front, as the moderator indicated, and the public will have access to that area. So that, you know, there's no other requirement as far as Zoom and so forth, so the public can be physically present for that meeting.
Okay, so that will be our target gathering area and time, I don't think we need to get there before 11:30. As far as I know, we don't have any other business that will be, can, you know, voted on before town meeting. But we can open our meeting at that time, any other items? Donna, did you have something that you wanted to let us know?
No, I think we're all set.
I would just throw out an FYI that Saturday is Buddy Bowl. So there's 12 teams at least that will be playing on the Lower Spring Street Field and the Upper Memorial Fields. So just be aware of that when you're parking and probably won't be an issue, but there'll be a bunch of people milling around.
Okay. So we won't be concerned that we're being invaded by, you know, people wanting to storm our town meeting.
Maybe we can find some extra votes.
Yeah.
Just to give a little bit of perspective, I did a Mass Moderators Meeting last Friday and there are some towns out in Western Mass that might have a thousand registered voters and they were lamenting only getting 150 people to show up at town meeting. And I just was going to talk about perspective, if we had people storm town meeting, it might be interesting, it might, as Doug said, have more voters though.
Yeah. All right, before I adjourn, is there anything else that we need to know before we meet up again at 11:30 on Saturday? All right, hearing none, I will entertain another motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, everyone, see you Saturday, hope for good weather.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, thank you Donna, thanks Deirdre.
Thank you.
Thanks Mike and Carol too.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.